All right, it is 5:30. We call this meeting to order, beginning with the termination of the quorum. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chair, we have all members present. It is a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As always, thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm on the back end of a cold, so I apologize for my voice, but I think I feel better than I sound now. That's the stage I'm in, so. We'll begin with the approval of the agenda. You have the agenda in front of you, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. That brings us to item three, recognition and awards, for which there aren't any tonight. And now we come to community comment. Item number four. This is a time for members of the community to come forward and address the board if they have any thoughts or concerns they would like to share with the board. There's a limit of three minutes per speaker and 15 minutes per topic. This is one of those meetings where I recognize the entire audience, so I'm guessing there aren't any, but I'll give it another's a little bit here, just in case I'm wrong. All right, seeing none, we will move along in our agenda. And that brings us to the consent agenda. This consent agenda is a collection of items that the board addresses at one time. These items are not up for discussion within the consent agenda, but any board member can remove an item from the consent agenda simply by requesting it. So are there any items anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself? Aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Passes seven, nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And this brings us to item number six, curriculum. The curriculum committee report is brought to us this evening by Phil Johnson.
Good evening. The curriculum committee met on the 12th of January, and while there, we had three items that we discussed. The first one was the idea of possibly going for an ADSS grant. ADSS stands for Alternative Delivery of Specialized Instructional Services. And this would be a process that we are working on with special ed and community ed as well, to determine what this would look like for possibly adding staff of some sort to help with our Tier Two and Tier Three students. Cheryl Hall gave us a presentation about what this might look like and gave her input from the Northfield perspective as well. The application, if I'm right, comes out in February something?
It's supposed to be out any time now. We have not seen it yet.
So once it gets out, we're going to start putting together what this might look like for here in Faribault and what this would look like for a proposal for staff. But once that's out, we will start working on that as soon as possible. The second thing, or the second item on the committee, was the addition of two new classes at the high school. The first one was a statistics class, and the math department came and did a presentation about what that would look like in their department to add a statistics course for their students. And in addition, the Spanish department came and did a presentation on what a Spanish-for-native speakers class would look like for the high school. And those were talked about and approved as well. The third thing was, community ed came and did a presentation about the adult diploma pilot that was approved through the state and what that would look like. They have been going to a few meetings and trying to build this pilot program for our students who have aged out of the system and are looking for a locally approved diploma for some of these students that no longer can receive services through K-12. And that's when the meeting was adjourned.
I was also at this meeting as one of the board members on the committee, and I was, there were a number of good things that Phil talked about being discussed, but I was particularly excited by this diploma program for people who are aging out of our system. We, with the Area Learning Center, the ALC, we can often serve those students up until when they're 21 in order to help them get their diploma. But when they hit 21, we lose any ability to serve them as it currently stands through that program, and then they are by default going into, if they want to continue and get a diploma, they go into what's known as the GED program. And apparently, this is not valued nearly as much by employers, people who have GEDs versus a local diploma, so there's a loss to the students by that as well. And also, it creates an issue where you have somebody who's 20 years old and trying to decide that they want to go back to school and get this diploma, and they can't finish it by the time they turn 21. What's the value in what they're going to do? And so the ALC was saying they struggle with some students who can be close by the time they're 21 but can't get there. And this program could really help those students. And all indications are there's a strong need for this in Faribault and around the state. It's being piloted in Faribault, but should go around the state. So I'm really excited by it, and I think it's a great way to serve adults in our community and help them get the education they need to join the workforce. So I'm excited about it.
Any questions about anything from the curriculum committee?
The first grant that you mentioned, or I'm sorry, can't remember. ADSS is currently found in Northfield. They're using it in Northfield. Is that, like you're suggesting, no, you're going to apply as well for both?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a two-year, every two years it comes up for application. This is when it's up for us to apply.
Okay. I just thought maybe if Phil was doing it, we would get sort of a model from that. But, new for both, I got it.
Randy?
Phil, what's the size of the grant we're going after?
It's up to 500,000 over two years. So, but the thing with this is that there would be, have to be some matching funds from the district, and it's a 60-40, so the district would have to pitch in 40 for every, for the 60% that we're asking from the state. So it would be a two-year grant.
And is it all or nothing, or there can be some amount up to that 500?
The way I understand is, you present the proposal to them of what you need, and then whatever that dollar amount is, they approve it or they don't.
Can the 40% be in kind, or where's fiscal district 60, or the?
It can be in kind.
Can't be in kind, it has to be a new allocation. Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate your report. I too was at that meeting, and I think there's some very interesting aspects to that, both with the ABE, Adult Diploma, and the statistics in mathematics. I would just like to go on record here is, we have been talking here on the board of working on a one-to-five-year plan for our district. And I would like to make the request of you and the rest of the curriculum committee that we, as soon as possible, start taking a, or at least having the discussion of how our curriculum might be developed and augmented and improved over the next five years. So I think that, I think the committee, the curriculum committee ought to have a strong voice in developing this longer-range plan. So I'm just putting that out there as on the record now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil, thanks. And this brings us next to the technology update. Maria Hansen.
Good evening. I have a few technology updates for each night. First of all, we continue to provide staff development in our curriculum days and early release days. January 19th was our curriculum day at our elementaries, and our integrationists provided gradebook training for elementary staff, and they went over some time-saving options for them to use an online gradebook versus paper and pencil, so they were able to sit down and develop their gradebook and get started with it right away. So that would hope that to be a time-saving option for our teachers. We continue to work on our summer professional development plan. We are looking at providing two sessions this year, one in June and another one in August. And hopefully, we'll have some information to provide to staff in February. We're looking at developing teams or groups where the integrations can work with these teams to help integrate technology into the classroom. We continue to make progress with our one-to-one mobile device planning. I recently met with the administration team to give a month update of our process, and we discussed timelines and some different options. And so, right now, I'm just working on some budgetary numbers for that plan. In relation to the one-to-one plan, we are going to be having an informational booth for parents on February 12th from 3:30 to 8:30. This is during registration at the high school and during conferences at the middle school. And we hope to demonstrate like how iPads are currently being used in our classrooms and just be there to answer any questions or just share our recent successes with the pilot iPads that we've put in our high school and middle school recently. And finally, right now, we're currently looking at our infrastructure needs and our upgrades. We need to expand our wireless coverage in our buildings if we're going to roll out a one-to-one. This is kind of a key step, or a key first step to a one-to-one implementation. We have to make sure our infrastructure is able to support a one-to-one device rollout. So we're looking at different options there. Any questions?
So, I'm not so sure if this is aimed at Maria or if it's aimed at the board. And forgive me here, since this is kind of the first official meeting other than the swearing-in meeting for us newbies. But obviously, this one-to-one technology piece is a big deal. Do we have a formal timeline of when we expect implementation at the high school, middle school, elementary schools, and how that's progressing? Is that a public document, or is there anything that is to be shared of where we're at? I know you said you're working on budgetary stuff, and we need to expand some infrastructure and whatnot, but obviously, you know, this is a huge project, and believe it or not, next September is not that far away. You know, so I don't know if that's a Maria question or a board question.
I think it's a Maria question.
We're working on the timelines right now. Right now, we're looking at, it all depends on our numbers. The district tech committee put together several proposals on where they would like to see the iPads roll out, but it really comes down to some budgetary numbers. But we're looking at the fall of this year, so we want to get going on ordering those iPads. Usually, if you order iPads through Apple, it's through a three-year lease, and we can get those sometime in March or April, and then hopefully, roll it out in August sometime to students. We're just still trying to determine, grade level-wise, where to start that process.
So when you say rollout, that could be just high school? That could be high school and middle school? That could be across everyone?
It could be, yeah, six through, one of the options was six through 12, and then packets of six iPads for grades three through five to initially start off with.
Just, it was last week we were up at the MSBA conference and whatnot. We sat in on one conference, and the whole conversation was dominated by one-to-one. And I applaud you for looking at two summer development programs, because the one issue that a gentleman, another board member, brought up was, they had issues, not because of technology, not because it was too overwhelming for students, but simply, they did not train their staff well enough. And that was their big issue, and he and their board took full responsibility for not having enough training. So I commend you for that, and whatever we have to do, should we do this, have our staff trained as much as we can. I fully support that.
Standard attendance since last summer, right?
Yeah, we've been implementing some training sessions whenever we can during the early releases and early days. And our tech integrationists have been providing one-to-one training also for our staff. So we're trying to do as much as we can.
Thank you.
And do we have a plan in place for how we're going to sustain the cost of iPads? Is that something I can find somewhere, or is it not? Because that's another big concern.
Yeah, that's all part of the budgetary plan that I'm putting together.
Okay.
Because the life of an iPad's usually three years. And so I have to consider the cost of the iPad plus the infrastructure upgrade.
Great.
We also have some lineups that are coming up for a five-year replacement plan, and then our annual softer budget costs and so forth. So yeah, I'm trying to plan out a whole 10-year plan.
And were the results of your parent survey? Wasn't there a parent survey that was sent out to everybody in the district? Did you get a good response to that?
Yeah, we have about 600 households respond. So I hope to provide some more information on that fairly soon.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for Maria? All right, thank you, Maria.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's try to see where I am. So that brings us to item seven, policy. There is no, there was no meeting this month, and therefore, no policy committee report. Which brings us to item eight, finance. And so, item eight A is a finance committee report. Adam Treger, would you like to start that off for us?
We met on January 12th, and I think the review of the reports was pretty normal. There weren't any major concerns. And we're going to be looking at a couple items further on during the agenda, where we'll be looking at specific items. But overall, I think we had good discussions about the finances of the district, and we're, well, Ms. Colleen, she's on leave. Randy will fill in.
Thank you very much. And you have the minutes attached to your agenda's board members if you would like to see more from the meeting itself. And so that brings us to item eight B. These are items reviewed by the finance committee and have been recommended to us for board approval. And that starts, let me get my agenda open to the right spot, starts with a letter of engagement to retain Ellers as a dissemination agent. And Andy, I'm sure is going to tell us about that.
I am. This actually did not make it to finance committee after.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep, so you didn't see this. We actually signed this so that we could get it back to Ellers, and we're just going to have you approve it. This is, this is, Ellers takes care of our debt disclosures for us, for all of the long-term debt that we have. There's certain disclosures that we have to do, and it's a pretty cumbersome process. So Ellers is a consultant that we hire, and they take care of all the disclosures for us. They're very well-respected within the industry. They've been doing it for us for years. It's about $2,800 this year to do it, so it's money well spent. Do you have any questions on that?
Questions on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This brings us to business office annual resolutions for fiscal year 2015.
Okay. These are annual resolutions that we typically do in July, but it was overlooked, so we're bringing them forward now. I think we all go through all of them, and then we'll just take one motion to approve. Is that correct?
Yeah, please do, yep.
So we go, the first one, 15-01, is the designation of depositories. This just designates which banks we're going to use. We have Mizloft, Wells Fargo, and State Bank of Faribault. 15-02 is the designation of official publication. This designates Faribault Daily News as our official newspaper. 15-03 is the authorization of use of eximulate signatures. This just allows us to print the board member's signatures on the checks rather than have you sign each and every check that we issue. 15-04, payment of claims between board meetings. This allows us to have our weekly check runs and to process our payroll without having US board members approve it before each check run. 15-05, combining duties of the clerk and treasurer. This allows us, this allows the district personnel to do duties that the district clerk and treasurer would normally do, such as reviewing vouchers, reviewing payroll before we pay it. Then 15-06, petty cash resolution. This just allows us to have petty cash. We have it correlated to athletics, food service, and community education. 15-07, investment resolution. This allows the director of finance to invest and transfer funds as they see fit. And then 15-08, declaring textbook surplus. This just allows us to identify textbooks that are no longer, or that are out of date. So any textbooks purchased before July 1st of '07, we're allowed to identify as surplus and dispose of. Any questions on any of those?
Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolutions as outlined.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? These are resolutions, therefore, we need a roll call. If I'm not incorrect, does that sound right?
That's right.
All right, so Mr. Clerk, if you'd please do a roll call.
Yep. Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself? Aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Passes seven, nothing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. And this brings us to item number eight B three. Resolution 15-09, authorizing Colleen Merzdorff to be a signer of ISD 656, Faribault Senior High School account at Premier Bank.
Yep, and this is in relation to, all we have at Premier Bank is a CD for our high school student activity count. And we actually never got the signer switched over from when Sandy was here, about six years ago. So we thought maybe it was time to do that. So this is just giving the authority to Colleen and Lyle for that.
Do, can we name the position instead of the person?
I'm not sure. This is a form that we got from Premier Bank, so I'm not sure that we could just name the position. I think they actually require us to have the person's name.
And should we name Colleen, or should we name you at the moment?
I think Colleen is fine. I mean, she still is, she is the director of finance. I'm only interim, so I think it's good to have.
And there's no timeline for this either?
Yeah.
I think we're okay.
Okay.
Yep. We waited five years, so I think we can wait more months.
So there's nothing pressing going on here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 15-09, authorizing Colleen Merzdorff to be signer of ISD 656, Faribault Senior High School account at Premier Bank.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've got the first.
Tom first, even, so I guess.
Good luck.
I got it.
All right, is there any discussion?
Can we have a replay on that?
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, this is a resolution, so we need a roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself? Aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes seven, nothing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
This brings us to item eight B four, additional special education nonlicensed staff at Jefferson and Lincoln.
The finance committee did, in fact, approve this. To go forward.
This one came in from the finance committee. It was recommended for board approval. All right.
Yes. In your packet, I believe you have the corrected memo that was presented today?
Um, it's online.
Online.
There was a correction made.
A correction.
Yes.
The wrong one was submitted.
Yes.
I apologize for that error.
The one in board book is correct.
The one in board book, as of earlier today, is correct?
This afternoon.
Okay. Then I should have it.
I alluded over the weekend what?
I'll pass this on to you.
There's words, looks the same as mine, I think.
The number should be 42,007.
Seven forty-five.
Okay, so then I didn't get it either?
No. Okay. The total cost is?
Yep, so he already wrote this down, and I'll pass it along. So it's just one number that's different?
Yes.
And then the backup is added.
All right, so I'll pass it along.
And the backup document was added as well, just so there's a spreadsheet with the cost, the costing of each of the positions, so that you have that in detail, if you need it.
Thank you. So it's got the two positions, and then each of those, yeah. Okay. Okay. So Cheryl, would you like to tell us a little bit about these two new positions?
Increased needs, new students, or increased needs of students that we currently have, each at a different, one at Jefferson and one at Lincoln Elementary.
And is this amount a net amount after any additional aid that new students would receive?
Correct. And this is actually, this costing was generated over what would be the cost over a school year, not for the rest of this school year, since it's most likely that these students would continue to have that need. So Colleen thought it would be appropriate to have the costing out, the largest amount that it would be, costed out for you.
I make a motion to approve the addition of the professional.
We have a motion to approve the addition of additional special education nonlicensed staff. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
This has nothing to do with the motion, so I'll bring it up. And it's really not specific to specialized, but if my senior memory, it seems that we've had a number of additions to our budget over the last several months since we approved the budget last May or April. I wonder if we could possibly get a tally of how many, how much we have now added to our budget since it was originally approved? I have a concern that we're approving these expenditures without, in fact, making a motion to adjust the budget accordingly. So I'd like to know what the dollar amounts are.
It's a good idea. And maybe, I don't know, if you could compare And maybe, I don't know, if you could compare to our enrollment estimate, I guess, to.
We'll probably put it separate with the revenue, yeah, we'll do a roll.
I know we had discussed this a bit at the finance meeting, and where we stand year to date versus kind of where we thought budget year to date, but my learning curve of school finances is that payments are often, you know, come in a week later, or two weeks later, or thirty days later than thought, so it's, it's hard to track oftentimes exactly compared to a normal business type of thing, but.
That's not what I'm asking.
No, I don't.
I'm asking for a different set of information. I understand that payments can come later, what I'm asking for is how much we have expanded our budget over what we originally approved back in April or May, whenever it was.
Yeah, we can do that, we can get that detail.
Thank you.
I would be interested in any information that could be included in that report that would distinguish between one-time or one-year expenditures or what we're perceiving as an ongoing expenditure such as this one passed tonight. So if, if that could be included as part of that information, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for.
No, I, I appreciate, I think it's an important question for clarification, and, and I think the challenge, I'm sure for you and for myself at this moment is we're working from my memory. My memory would say that things that we added for non-going expenses were almost exclusively special education expenses, which happened that way by their nature, and that others were one-time expenses, but that is working from my memory, and so I think your list is perfectly appropriate, but Tom's clarification is a great thing to ask for to, so that we're not working from our memories, I think that's a, that's a good way to approach it.
We'll have also at the work session, we're planning, just trying to plan ahead a little bit to include that component within our budget talks as we progress forward, so we'll kind of show you the outline of what we've done so far, what we consider one-time expenses, and then we'll give you some latitude to decide whether or not you believe this is one-time expense or if you want to put that into our core curriculum eventually. So we'll, we'll start having that discussion at the work session too, but yeah, that's all going to be included.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, any, any, well, there's no more discussion on that item, we've finished it, so. All right, that brings us to item eight C, starting with the enrollment report, so you see the enrollment report in front of you. We ticked up ever so slightly during January, so on the year, I think our numbers are holding remarkably stably, which is not unusual for, for this time of year, so our numbers are doing well. Any questions or thoughts on enrollment report? The current number for January is thirty-eight nineteen, we started the year in September at thirty-eight oh nine, so, but of course, over those months, we've gone up ten students.
I'm, Mr. Sesker, perhaps you have, have or could get some sense of this. It, it appear, my aging memory indicates that we can often lose some high school students at this point in the year who come to the determination that they're just not going to make it and decide to do nothing, or transfer somewhere else, or, or whatever it might be. And those numbers might not show up for another month or so, is my memory, is that a?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get some pretty accurate numbers, probably by March, we'll really know.
Okay.
And by the way, our census is pretty high for four-year-olds, so I was just talking to Yvette a little bit, we're up to three hundred ninety-nine students for four-year-olds. And of course, at public schools and private schools, so there is a lot of kids coming to school next year.
Where are we going to put them?
Well, we may have to do some planning.
We need to talk about that. Thank you, Todd. So enrollments look strong, which raises its own challenges, but having talked to people with enrollments falling, I think our challenges are the better ones to have, so. That's good. Okay, that brings us to financial report, just to show us as best we can determine where we are at this point in the school year. Questions on the financial report? And that brings us to item eight C three, consider approval of gifts and donations. We have three on the docket this evening. They begin with the Roosevelt PTO in the amount of six hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents for an author visit for the year of the reader program at Roosevelt. We have the Veterans of Foreign Wars making a six hundred dollar donation for scholarships and equipment for Fairble Falcon Archers Program, and Mercury Corporation, which made a five hundred dollar donation for funds to the, to the robotics program, so. On behalf of the entire school board, as always, we thank all of these organizations and all those who, who step forward to help out our school district in, in the myriad of ways that they do so. And so we thank you, and thank you notes will be sent to all of these donors. So I will entertain a motion to accept these gifts.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. This brings us to other committee reports. We have no insurance committee report this evening. Wellness committee says Anne Marie, but I don't see Anne Marie, so I'm assuming there is no wellness committee report this evening, is that true?
True, I do have her community ed report.
Okay, community ed report, and I guess in lieu of Anne Marie, we will have Todd mention some items.
Yeah. Anne Marie wanted me to let you know that the National Archery in the Schools program is being delivered through Community Education Enrichment at Fairbowl Middle School. In the first inaugural season, Fairble Falcon Archers, FFA, has eighteen participants. Justin Thralkill, head coach, Dan Honigroff, volunteer manager, will be taking the team to their first archery tournament in New Prague on February seventh. This is in hopes that it will be preparing the team to compete at the state tournament in March. The Archers received six hundred dollars from the local VFW's for program which you just approved. Project Able Winter Bowling League is going strong with fifty-six participants. Leagues will be held Monday and Thursday nights, participants have, are having a wonderful time improving their bowling skills and socializing with their new friends. ECFE is partnering with Ruth's House of Hope, which is a nonprofit organization. Ruth's House provides affordable housing in a safe, supportive, and healing environment to help women and families on the way to a new beginning. Many Ruth's House residents have been homeless and/or they have been maybe in recovery from violence, addiction, health challenges, or other issues. ECFE staff are delivering programming onsite at Ruth's House, which include parenting skills, focusing on the mother as a child's first and foremost teacher, literacy, social and emotional learning, and facilitating interaction between the mother and her children. So that's what I have from Anne Marie and community ed.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any questions for Todd?
If I can try to answer Anne Marie.
I was also at the curriculum, or the community ed meeting.
Quick question for Mr. Casper, or Mr. Sesker, the archery that is being done through community ed, will that at some point be a lettering type of event like trap shooting has become? Well, i- is that the plan, do you know, or?
We haven't made that plan yet, I mean, that certainly could be something, that would go through Mr. Hubert for that process, but yep, that would be, that could be the plan. And I'm not saying it would be, it could be the plan. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. And so this brings us to other, oh wait, sorry, item nine D facility report, it says Kevin Hildebrandt, Todd, are you also going to be there?
Yeah, there's, yep, and right now, there's, we really, we're in the process of the district office planning and the adult basic ed planning, and the architects have pretty much all that they need now to move forward, I think we talked a little bit about that last time around, so they're going to get ready for the bidding process and start setting those, those documents up for contractors to take a look at.
Is there a plan for the board to see a more finished plan than, than the consideration we see?
Yeah. Yep, yeah, and we haven't seen that yet either, we've just given them all the information, before they go out for bids and everything else, we'll get one more final look.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, please.
I wonder if myself and Jerry Brown, the facilities committee, I wonder if we could call a meeting of the facilities group with all the other members?
Yeah, you know, that's a good idea, because we probably should get an update of what's going on there, it's been a couple months since we met, so, yeah, let's go ahead and set that up.
All right, any further questions on this item? All right. Hearing none, we will then move on to item ten, other matters. Item A, consider approval of Fairble High School Band Choir and Orchestra Spring Trip to Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Chicago, Illinois, March twelfth, two thousand fifteen through March fifteenth, twenty fifteen. So I know we have a, a couple of representatives, if you guys wanted to come forward and tell us, I don't know if you're prepared to come forward and tell us a little bit. That's, that's what we're going to do. In the meantime, Kathy, do we have another board packet? Tom's iPad is giving him trouble, I can see.
It's quitting.
If there's a, if there's another spare packet left in that autumn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My pleasure. Thank Kathy for being prepared.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, and then thank you both for being here tonight, and just tell us a little bit about the trip.
Yeah, like we, like was mentioned, we will be taking one hundred students from Band Choir and Orchestra to both Milwaukee and Chicago. We'll actually be performing in a Milwaukee suburb of New Berlin at New Berlin High, Eisenhower High School in New Berlin. We will perform that Friday morning, and hopefully even have an exchange opportunity with, with the students at the high school. We will then move on to Chicago, where we will have a clinic masterclass at DePaul University with their professors there, who will give our students valuable feedback on their performance, and just a different opportunity to experience the music and, and enhance their learning experience in school, in what we're doing. Saturday will feature some of the sightseeing opportunities that we have, like going to Navy Pier. We will go to a Broadway show, The Million Dollar Quartet, which is actually Chicago's longest-running musical currently. And Sunday, we will wrap it up, by going to the House of Blues, there's a brunch, and then apparently Miss Vignus has been there, where they have a whiz bang gospel choir that is just a showstopper. So we're really excited to take the students.
We currently have six chaperones, I'm no longer with, it's on your list there, is no longer participating with, with us. And so you can see on your list there are the chaperones that we currently have, we will have two more by the time that we are going to take off. And so the chaperones will be with our students to help supervise during the nights and have a schedule for that sort of thing, and yeah, that's where chaperones will be doing.
And student cost is not to exceed four hundred and fifty, and we've actually held our, we're going through a, a tour company that does music groups, and we've held their feet to the candle a couple times of making sure that we don't go above that, they've said, well, we'll, we'll add this, we'll add this, no, we've held their feet to them. And to help alleviate costs for students, we have, have had several fundraising opportunities throughout the school year. Great American Fundraisers has had catalog sales, we've had ongoing quick trip cards, where students have been able to earn a percentage of the cards they sell, and then we're currently wrapping up a butterbread sale tomorrow.
And I'll put in a, an advertisement for you, I, I have the understanding that they are looking for male chaperones in particular, they need some more of those. So if there's anybody listening who, who could help out with that, I'm sure they would be appreciative. They were apparently desperate enough, they asked me to, to do it, and I can't, so, so anybody who could would be greatly appreciated. Are there any questions from the board on this item? I think it sounds awesome, I'm really excited to, I'm, I'm grateful for, for all the work that I'm sure you guys have put into getting it organized for our students, and, and I think it'll be an, an amazing experience, so. So thank you very much for doing that. Are there any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
And this brings us to scheduling a school board retreat. Todd, I'll let you lead that discussion.
Yeah, since we are thinking about revising our mission vision and doing a, a one to five-year curriculum plan, it'd be nice to get some good feedback from the school board members. I was looking maybe in the middle of March for a date, an evening for a retreat, and we could do it similar to what we've done before, we could have it at the, the district office, and we could cater Sadekso in with a meal that evening, if you're interested. I was looking at. Yeah, spring break starts the fifteenth, right, so we want to try to stay away from that week.
Yeah, so the fourteenth, so.
Yeah, so I don't know what the eleventh looks like with everybody, that second week in March.
Evening of the eleventh is a Wednesday?
Yep.
Aren't you on it? Perhaps starting at five thirty?
Five or five thirty, yep.
Yeah, five o'clock maybe?
Does that work for everybody? Good on that. That'd be great, then we can start rolling some things out, and trying to figure out what sort of agenda we want to see. It'd give also two days, or two times for the curriculum committee to take a good review of the curricular part of the one to five-year plan too, that they can bring to the board retreat, so that'd be nice.
Is this at the district office?
Yeah.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
Five thirty or five o'clock?
Uh, I don't know, what did we say?
He said five, sorry.
Did you say five?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If that's agreeable with the board? We'll say five, okay?
Great.
Good.
All right, so we'll say five o'clock on March eleventh. We need a, a motion to approve setting that, that meeting date, so I'll entertain a motion to approve a school board retreat scheduled for five o'clock on March eleventh at the district office?
So moved.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And this brings us to item ten C, consider approval of agreement between ISD six five six and IUOE Local Seventy for Pair Professionals. So I don't know if, we have two new board members who haven't been involved in negotiation discussions prior to this, so, so I don't know, Todd or Nicole, if you would, wouldn't mind taking a little bit, just to, maybe talk us through the process of how we come to one of these agreements before they come to the board, and, and then we can take any questions or thoughts there.
Sure, I'll go ahead and start, and then I'll have Nicole add.
Sort of both the history of how we get here, and then a little bit about this particular agreement, I think is what would be nice to have.
Yeah, and what we traditionally do before the negotiations start is we try to get some parameters from the board as to where they would like to see us settle. And then I'm usually at the beginning of the meetings, or I try to be in as many meetings as I can, but Nicole basically is in charge of the meetings for negotiations, and we try really, really hard to stay within those parameters for the board. And for the most part, I think we have done a pretty good job with what we've gone out to the board with. Nicole and Colleen, and now Andy has done some of this too, as they've put, along with the pair of professionals, and, and the union reps have put in a, a lot of hours to settle a good contract that we believe clarifies some language items and offers some increase to the staff. And I just want to emphasize the good work that happens with Nicole and, and her crew when they go into these negotiations, which are sometimes pretty difficult. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Nicole, if you want to add to that somewhat.
Thank you. So with this group in particular, we did begin meeting with them late last summer, so it is, it's a very long process, and that's, that's not uncommon, because there are a lot of items to go through, and you really want to kind of fine-tooth comb some items and really make the contract work for the district and the employees at the same time, so there's, there's a lot of detail that goes into this, and a lot of focus and concentration, and a lot of collaboration as well with our union reps. The pair professionals include about forty-six employees for us for the school district, so it is our second-largest group next to our teachers. They have, they, they, we have, I want to say nine, seven or eight classifications of pair professionals, so they work within our Kids World program, they work in our kindergarten classrooms, our first, our first grade classrooms, also help with the recess and lunchroom supervision each day. And then the majority of them are made up of our special education pair professionals here with our district. So now looking at this summary, this is what we've come up with as a tentative agreement. There are about seven language items that we have either tried to clarify, or changed a little bit, tweaked a little bit, and you can see that there are some strike-through language items, and then the new language items are those that are red and underlined for you. In addition to that, on the backside, you'll see the financial package that we have tentatively, tentatively agreed upon.
So some of this language looks to me, some of this discussion of, of the bid, looks like it came out of some concerns that were brought to us by pair professionals over the bidding process. We had grievances that came to the board, when was this, almost a year ago? It was a while ago. So I'm guessing this language came out of that, and, and trying to clarify that to try and keep that confusion from coming up in the future, is that fair to say?
That's part of it, yeah, and then there's other clarification pieces.
Yeah, yes.
Not all of these, but particularly article eleven, looks to me like that specifically came out of that, through this discussion, yeah?
That's, that's very, that's very true, what you just mentioned. Many times, that's what we try to do, is we look at what grievances we've had, or what items that we've had come up often over, over the two-year period. And that's kind of where we start to identify what language items we need to at least address.
I'll move approval of the contract to Local Seventy in the school district.
All right, thank you, we have a motion to approve, we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there further discussion or questions? Please, Ms. Shawson.
Yes, what do we have budgeted, was it six percent?
We had six percent budget over two years, yes.
Two years, and you're at eight point three four?
That's correct.
So you're over budget, so were the extra monies coming out of the fund balance?
Yes, that's correct.
And then that's going to take away money from other programs, possibly?
Possibly, correct.
Thank you.
One follow-up question for you. You said this entails forty-six people, right?
Hundred and forty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry, now that answered my question, I missed the hundred, thank you.
So you can see on the backside, the financial package is, the first year is a two percent wage increase, that represents about twenty to thirty-five cents an hour as an increase. That represents about twenty to thirty-five cents an hour as an increase. The second year is a one percent increase, so it's about an additional ten to fifteen cents in addition in the second year. One of the, one, one part of it that did represent a high amount of this package was their health insurance increase. We did increase their health insurance contributions to single coverage by seventy-five dollars in both years, our district contribution. We also increased the family contribution by seventy-five dollars in both years. And we increased, their family contribution is paid for ten months. We increased it in the second year to include it for eleven months rather than ten months. We're finding that these are typically our lowest paid individuals within the district. And so we really wanted to try and help alleviate some of the health insurance costs that have been rising significantly in the last few years. So by providing it for eleven months rather than ten months will help with that issue. The rest of the financial package includes, we did have a statutory increase to PERA this year, which was a half percent increase that went up. And then the cost of our health insurance for the district also went up this year and we're budgeting for about another ten percent increase as well. So the eight point three four is not just wages or increases, or excuse me, wages or insurance. It's really made up of a lot of different factors.
Nicole, so we had a pay equity study a little while ago
Yes.
that found that some of our male dominated categories of employees were achieving their highest pay rate earlier than our female dominated categories. If my memory is correct on that, so please tell me if I'm wrong. So I just want to make sure we feel like this contract is part of the solution to addressing that issue so that the next time we have a pay equity study that that issue doesn't pop up again, does it feel like this will address that?
Yes, this will, this will help keep us online.
Are there other questions on this item?
I would just add that this is the recognition of paraprofessionals week here in Minnesota. Throughout the state, we're trying to recognize the hard work that our paraprofessionals do. I was able to attend an assembly today at the Pratt Building and it was great. And the kids have a lot to say about paraprofessionals there and the great job they do.
It's my privilege for thirty-four years in the district to observe the work of paraprofessionals. And they do amazing things and amazing variety of things. And I've been very impressed with their work over the years.
Are there any other questions or comments before we roll on this item? All right, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes six one.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Next item on the agenda, item ten D, consider approval of resolution fifteen ten, creating a cooperative sponsorship between Faribault High School and Minnesota State Academy for the Blind in Boise Swimming and Diving. So Ken is not here, so these are, these are the cooperatives we have with a number of schools in the community. VA has some of these, sometimes the academies have them, Shattuck maybe has one or two. And so these are cooperative sponsorships that we have to have in place in order for students from those schools to participate in our activities. And so we typically, when a student wants to join an activity, we are approving that sponsorship. Sometimes the other schools drop out of those if they don't have any students who are interested that particular year and come back in other times. So throughout the year, we often see these resolutions creating or dissolving these sponsorships as necessary. So I'm assuming there's a student or two from the Academy for the Blind who are choosing to participate at this time. So that's why the sponsorship is in front of us this evening. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And if there are any questions or comments at this time?
Just a question, do we have to have a cooperative agreement with both academies or can we do it with just one? Because they're under one governing body, so.
When I had a conversation with Ken, it was just the one, all we had to have was, was the M S A B.
Okay, so if somebody from the deaf academy wanted to participate, would we have to go into another cooperative agreement?
We'd have to do another separate resolution for that.
Because they're operating under one governing body.
Yeah, according to what I, I'll have to check it out, but yeah, they're two different high schools from what I understand. And then Ken has just told me that we have to do it separate, I asked him that same question.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh wait, this is a resolution, yep, thank you. Sorry, we need to do this as a roll call, so thank you, Mr. Clerk, if you'll do a roll call for us.
Okay, thank you. Todd?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Passes seven zero, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And this brings us to item ten E, consider approval of full-time director of special services for Faribault. So Superintendent Sescer, if you'd like to talk us through a little bit of the history of how this has evolved and let us know why this is before the board this evening?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to clarify, we already have a full-time person with us. We actually hired through our contract a full-time person. We're just now sharing that person, Cheryl, right now with Northfield. So we contract with Northfield, Cheryl Services, our special ed director, and then they in turn give us a dollar amount for those services. So this is really to ask the board to give us the direction to have our own full-time special education director here in Faribault. And that special ed director would be utilized strictly with Faribault.
How long ago was it that we began to share that position, was that about a year ago?
This is the second year.
Two years?
Yep.
Two years.
And I know that it's been, for the most part, it's been a good experience, but it's gotten to the point where I think the position is, it's gotten to be a lot for one person to handle. And I just don't want things to start escaping us as we move ahead with our special education programs.
Mr. Chair, we, did that contract automatically sunset with Northfield?
It did.
So we don't have to take any action to dissolve that contract?
That's correct, yep. It automatically resolves or dissolves, I guess, in June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to check my memory, when we went to a shared director with Northfield, did we add any local staff to help with that?
Administration.
Administration?
We did not.
So we, we did not hire any personnel to further support our special ed program?
Correct.
As a result of the decision to share a year and a half ago, whatever.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I think at the time, tell me if you think I'm not characterizing this right, Superintendent Sescer. But at the time, the thought was that there were enough overlap of the needs between the two districts that the streamlining might help keep that, keep from asking too much of that position. And that there were some really advantages to being able to work together with Northfield on a number of items. And I think what we found is that, that that ends up stretching that position too thin and it's leaving both districts feeling a little underserved by that position. Not through any fault of the person in the position, just the nature of the position, being asked too much of that position. Is that a fair characterization of what we started having? What we intended and what happened when we returned?
I think the intention came about because of budget issues and just an opportunity because of a change in positions with Northfield was losing their full-time director at the time. But I think there were concerns raised at that time, probably by Mr. O'Shaughnessy, that that would be too big of a job for one person.
Well, I think our expansion of our special education programs too, we've expanded our CREC program by quite a bit. Our special education population has increased, it's just been, it was, the intent was to coordinate programs and consolidate programs, but we found out that for one person, it was just a little bit too much. So if the board does approve it, the next step will be for us to go out and start advertising and looking for a special education director. And we'd really like to probably get that process started in February if we can. But we want to make sure that the board understands what the situation will be. Most, by the way, most of the salary will be picked up by state and federal dollars. It's more of a ship for program purposes so that we have a supervisor right here in our community.
So this is a good time to search for a special ed director?
This is probably the best time, yeah.
Best time, right, okay. So you're going to advertise like tomorrow?
We'll probably start, well, pretty close. We'll probably give it another week or so because we want to get some feedback from staff and try to figure out the characteristic that we want to build around our special ed director. And we've done a little bit of that already, but we're going to hope, no later than the middle of February.
When's the date that the current agreement ends at the, is it the beginning of the summer or the end of the summer?
The agreement with Northfield?
Yeah, what's the actual date that that ends?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, so it's sort of midsummer that that transition will happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Northfield's totally aware of this.
They're, yep, we've been communicating with them, you know, completely with this whole piece, very transparent.
Any further questions on this item?
Can I make a motion?
Please do.
To hire a full-time director of special services for Faribault School District?
All right, we have a motion, a motion to approve the full-time director of special services for Faribault, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so this brings us to item eleven, other items of information, which starts with our student representative.
So last time I was here, we talked about Toys for Tots, right? We discussed, all right, awesome. Well, we wrapped up finals at the high school, so that's, thank goodness, awesome. It all went well for everybody and the teachers got their grades in and I saw report cards are going out tomorrow, so that's super awesome. For theater, we had a thousand plus elementary students come in and we put on The Boy Who Cried Wolf. For them, that was so much fun, we raised, I'm not sure how much food we actually got, the food shelf gives us that total later. But I know we raised tons of food for the food shelf, so that's also really, really awesome. And then this past weekend, on Saturday, the high school, we hosted Sadie Hawkins, so that was fun. We had four hundred plus students come in and we had a dance and it was, it was really awesome and fun. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Our prom plans coming along.
Prom plans are coming along, just very smoothly. We have five guys on the prom committee this year, so we are so excited. Last year, last year we had three at the end, but they're super awesome, helpful guys, and so we're really excited about them. Otherwise, the prom committee is around twenty, twenty people. And yeah, we're, February second, the Monday, we are going up to the news to taste food, so that's awesome. Not all of us, five of us, but.
Who chooses which five?
Megan does, our senior class president. I think she's taken two seniors and two juniors, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So up next, any items of information from school board members?
Well, okay, I was to the annual leadership conference here a week or so ago. It was some good speakers, Todd was there and Kathy attended her first meeting. In fact, did you want to announce what Kathy is now?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Kathy is?
She actually is now. She's been elected to the.
MAE.
It's M A E.
M A E O P.
Yeah.
Association of Educational Office Personnel.
So she's on the state board.
For the, excellent.
So we had a good time, Tom had a good time.
Kevin Harkett was great, that opening speaker was terrific, talked about technology and he was really very, very good. We can't get him, we tried to get him for next fall for the, for our staff and he has already been booked, so we were not able to get him. He was excellent.
I'd like to compliment, or comment on the closing speaker on Friday. I was unable to attend on Thursday, but on Friday, the closing speaker was the two thousand and thirteen Teacher of the Year who works in a small school in Washington State, I believe. And he wears an incredible number of hats in his building, but his message was about the power of teachers. And the one applause line that struck me in, in a time where education seems to be criticized widely, his assertion was that the system is not broken, that there are an incredible number of incredible things happening between students and teachers all over the country. And he wanted to reassure the members of the school board that there are many, many good things happening in our schools. And I know that's true here in Faribault, but it was great to hear from a national speaker.
Anybody else have a lot of dominate here? That also was those booths, I don't know, a couple hundred booths and stuff like that. You learn a lot of stuff there, so. But one thing is that, I talked to Chad a little bit too about this, is, and I saw in the paper that we're advertising for bids for our health insurance. But I was in with some talk there, I got some information in a card about being self-insured. If we, are we pursuing that? I know it's been brought up before when I was part of the insurance committee also with the finance, but I can give this to you, but.
I know Colleen has looked into it.
Chad, I was talking in Kathy's office and he got some information of another district of self-insurance and maybe saving money. So that's what I would like to at least, could the district investigate self-insurance?
Yeah, we've kind of looked at it a little bit right now, we haven't brought anything to the finance committee, just internally, Colleen and I have talked a little bit about that. But I think when Colleen gets back, certainly Andy can help out with that too, we'll take a look at that and see if that's something we want to pursue.
For my information, what does that mean, that you give the employee a fund and they purchase a fund, they're all of each individual employee, is that what that means?
Well, I don't know if I really, you know, up on this, that's why, you know, I'm no expert from it, but it's almost, you know, I don't know if you're really going through an insurance agency, but maybe a reinsurance agent?
So.
I think that's what it is, the school district itself is the insurer.
Okay.
So it begins to work depending upon the size of the organization. And I don't know what size is the critical size before it starts to make.
So contracted administrator of.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
And I sat in on a presentation from Prior Lake Savage School District, absolutely fascinating. I've already sent you an email strongly encouraging us to look at it. They have roughly thirteen hundred employees and in the first year, they saved one point seven million dollars. They were paying a hundred and ten dollars per claim and they have that now renegotiated down to twenty-five dollars per claim. They saved eight hundred thousand alone in administrative costs. And then the other nine hundred thousand dollars that they saved was essentially the profit the insurance company was making that was the premiums above the claims. And their last four years of increases, I mean, we just heard tonight a presentation about what our insurance premiums are going up by, I think ten point three four percent if I wrote it down correct. Their last four years, their increases were zero, zero, six point four and zero, for an average of one and a half percent. Should the next four years be the same, their premiums will actually decrease because their fund balance will be so high. Back to Jason's point, I don't know what the critical mass number is. You know, if we have between five and six hundred people, is that enough? I don't know. And the one, you know, fear that you worry about with insurance is, well, what if we have a catastrophic event and we tip over type of thing, is there something? What they do is they buy a reinsurance policy that kicks in at a certain level and that's how they characterize it. But very fascinating, I would strongly encourage us to look at it because the way they presented it was every year, their insurance costs were going up ballpark five percent, which to them meant three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, which equated to ballpark six staff members. Well, that's, you know, where does, where does that come from? Well, they're in the general fund continuing to.
to eat into that and eat into that, so, very interesting stuff.
I wonder if there might be some potential for a collaborative agreement with another district, if that, that number point, if we are below the, the optimum number-
We're too small to perhaps make sense if there's a logic.
Partner with another district and, and reach that number, I don't know.
We already do that with South Central, so we are already kind of in a self-insured sort of pool, it's not self-insured, I think what you guys are talking about is that our district would just go solely on our own. We're already pooled with a bunch of schools in western Minnesota, somewhere southeast has another pool of schools that go together for the same cost, so there are pools that are out there right now. There's also a public insurance program right now called PEAP, that is a statewide insurance program that we are required to give bids out, the whole idea is that everybody will go in the state insurance pool, and, but that has a lot of, I think in my estimate, I, I don't think that has very many legs on it, I think that looking at our own self-insurance pool is actually something that's going to be different than what we're doing right now.
I think the thing Chad brought up is critically important, because one catastrophe, one heart transplant could escalate the insurance costs here, so the insurance really has to get very carefully.
Yeah.
Especially the size of the employee who was being asked.
Right. The, the other thing I'll add to it is, they were very aggressive with it, they started talking about it April one, and by July one, they had it implemented, they had everybody on board, they had weekly update meetings with all their staff and their different union reps and organizations, and they saw the cost savings that could be done. And the last thing I'll add to it is, the insurance company was making so much off of it, that the district had to request virtually every day for three straight weeks, how much are we paying, paying in premiums and whatnot, and the insurance company finally relented after three weeks of giving them their own info, that's just how profitable it was for them, so, it was interesting. And one last comment, I think that we're in a position now where we can actually look into it, whereas four or five years ago, we probably weren't in that same position, financially, we're in pretty good shape.
Are we still on the board member?
Yep.
Well, I'm, I'm making an application for my curmudgeon license, so please bear with me.
Who approves that?
The International Society of Curmudgeons. We had a, one of our actions today was to declare surplus textbooks, and I believe the, the age was purchased by two thousand and seven, so that would roughly make them eight years old. And I'm fully in favor of that, have no problem with, with that whatsoever, but since we do have two men, two new members on the board, and, and I'm going to just make the point that the average copyright age of materials in the middle school library will now pass forty years of age, the average, and at the high school, it will be back up to, close to twenty-five, it had been down to seventeen about seven years ago. So if we're going to look at a long-term plan, we need to, I think, address that issue, if we are going to try, you know, if we're going to transfer to electronics, let's figure out a way to do that, if we want to go to eBooks, let's find a way to do that. Library Association, which manages a library of about twenty thousand volumes for the size of schools that we have, and to convert twenty thousand volumes to eBooks would be a rather expensive process to be done all at one time, I don't know where, I'm, I'm not making a suggestion of going any which way, but if, if textbooks are obsolete after eight years, then library books certainly are obsolete after forty years. When I first came to the library and saw, as a professional librarian, and saw that we had books talking about President Eisenhower planning to build the interstate freeway system, I knew that we had a problem, and if we're going there now and reading about President Carter and dealing with the Iran hostage crisis of, of that time period, that's well and good for itself, but we've missed a lot since then.
Any other items of information? All right, superintendent?
I have been attending a lot of meetings, too, I was at the leadership conference with those of you that were up there, another very good conference, our PDS meetings still are going strong, we just found out that they're going to continue our TOSA program, some of you may know what that is, we're able to get two certified teachers into our buildings for about thirty-five thousand dollars, and then move two teachers into other roles that can help us with curriculum, so that our relationship with the Mankato University folks and the surrounding schools is, still remains very strong. I'm also part of the MAS, a Region One Leadership Team, and we've met and we develop different programs for professional development for superintendents in that area. We've had our diversity integration meeting, we've had one of those meetings now, Jason, I think we have another one coming up.
Is it May's or no?
Yeah, Wednesday, I'm not going to be able to make that, I've got another funeral, so I'm going to have to skip out on that one, but I'll talk to you a little bit about that, too. Let's see, we met with the police department, the city attorney, special education staff, and others about our CREC building, and some of the issues that are surrounding there and trying to resolve some different pieces, we're in the communication mode right now, and we haven't come up with any set plan at this time, but at least we're able to communicate with those entities involved with some of those students that we have that struggle and, and are sometimes a little bit difficult to deal with. Our C meeting was last week, I was able to see Dr. Burge for a little while, we had a couple of representatives at our C meeting to talk about what the legislative action is. Right now, a lot, not a lot has been done with our legislative, there's been a lot of proposals given, I know that Kevin actually, Kevin Hildebrand actually testified for the facility committee last week, but we're not quite there yet, we'll be pretty deep in legislative agenda items probably in February and March, and I'll give you more of an update at that time. And going to a lot of activities, I was able to watch the play, The Boy Who Cried Wolf, and Emily did a great job, like she always says, along with the other actors and actresses on this one. Everything is going full steam ahead, January is a very busy month for activities and academics, and everybody's very busy at this time, so, and enjoying every bit of it, so, thank you.
Okay, and so we are at item twelve, dates to remember, February ninth at seven thirty AM will be the finance meeting at the district office, February ninth at three thirty PM will be the curriculum advising, advisory committee at the district office, February ninth at five thirty PM will be the work session at the district office, and February seventeenth at five, which is a Tuesday, at five thirty PM will be our regular board meeting at the Faribault Middle School auditorium, so highlighting Tuesday there as our, it's a different date than our normal meetings because of some conflicts that we were trying to get around. And that brings us to item thirteen, adjournment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, see you good evening.